Five, four, three, two, one.
Hello and welcome to everybody. I now call this meeting of the Waterbury Board of Education Building and School Facilities Committee on today, Thursday, October the 15th, 2020, to order. We do have a quorum. And then the agenda today, we have one agenda item encompassing seven different change orders to the Wendell Cross Elementary School project. I will turn it over to Mr. Clark, who's going to walk us through each of these. Will?
Thank you, Commissioner, and good evening, everybody. The change orders before you tonight, the first few are essentially cleanup from a prior discussion we had about all the unsuitable soil elements. As we discussed last time around, when we were doing the contract amendment to put some more money into the construction manager's contract, that was designed to move the money where it needed to be, to push it out in order to finish up the unsuitable soil issues we were having in the manner we had discussed. So the first couple of change orders are really cleanup of that. This is now that the money was put into that CM account, we're able to push that through. And this is kind of the paperwork just catching up to that process and getting your formal now approval of that. Again, we kind of discussed that at some length at the last meeting, behind the scenes, the CM, the architects, Michael Blank, Waterbury Development Corp., all of which are on tonight as well to answer any more specific questions, worked on those things to put it all together once the amendment went through. The change orders five through eight, which you have back up on tonight that we've submitted, I would describe a little bit more as your normal run-of-the-mill kind of change orders, some ups, some downs. As we go through the project and you actually get your hands on it and work through, there are some elements that end up having to be revised or something that was not on the plans, but based upon how the setup is, it needs to be included and some other things go the other way. So when we've been able to get credits and take advantage of the systems and realities at play, we've noted that. And where we've had to make some changes and adjustments, modest, really, as you look through it from my perspective, we've added those in. So as a practical matter, the process is we have to be putting these in what's called change orders. There's a form that you see attached, it's kind of the financial workup. The local building committee, which is this committee, has to approve that. Then we submit that up to the state. There's a timeliness issue on these things for Department of Administrative Services, that you have to be submitting your change orders in a timely manner as you move along the way and getting it up to them. If you follow all of the math and the numbers on these things, essentially, what this does in total is move around the money and pay out of our contingencies for these change orders such that we're not adding anything to the budget at all. The guaranteed price of the project remains at $41,999,199.63. We continue at this point to have money in both the CM contingency of about, or exactly, $237,250.84. I'm sorry, that's in the owner's contingency. And in the CM contingency, we have $332,804.82 remaining. So we basically moved money around when we did that amendment with the construction manager to allow for us to pay through those soil change orders. And we pulled out of the contingency to pay for, from the CM contingency, and then we pulled out from the owner contingency to pay for the balance of the change orders. But I think we remain confident that we're on budget. And these change orders, I would just note the work that Newfield has done, and Brian is on the phone, or Zoom here tonight, and Dave Cody from Waterbury DC. These things are all very tightly scrutinized as we go through. So we're making sure on the scene, on the site, that only what absolutely positively has to be added is added and getting as many credits as we can and pushing through as many creative ideas as possible. All in all, outside of that initial soil issues, I would say the balance of the change orders is
Five, four, three, two, one.
Hello and welcome to everybody. I now call this meeting of the Waterbury Board of Education Building and School Facilities Committee on today, Thursday, October the 15th, 2020, to order. We do have a quorum and on the agenda today, we have one agenda item encompassing seven different change orders to the Wendell Cross Elementary School project. I will turn it over to Mr. Clark, who's going to walk us through each of these. Will?
Thank you, Commissioner, and good evening, everybody. The change orders before you tonight, the first few are essentially cleanup from a prior discussion we had about all the unsuitable soil elements. As we discussed last time around, when we're doing the contract amendment to put some more money into the construction manager's contract, that was designed to move the money where it needed to be, to push it out in order to finish up the unsuitable soil issues we were having in the manner we had discussed. So the first couple of change orders are really cleanup of that. This is now that the money was put in into that CM account, we're able to push that through, and this is kind of the paperwork just catching up to that process and getting your formal now approval of that. Again, we kind of discussed that at some length at the last meeting, behind the scenes, the CM, the architects, Michael Blank, Waterbury Development Corp., all of which are on tonight as well to answer any more specific questions, worked on those things to put it all together once the amendment went through. The change orders five through eight, which you have back up on tonight that we've submitted, I would describe a little bit more as your normal run-of-the-mill kind of change orders, some ups, some downs as we go through the project and you actually get your hands on it and work through. There are some elements that end up having to be revised or something that was not on the plans, but based upon how the setup is, it needs to be included and some other things go the other way. So when we've been able to get credits and take advantage of the systems and realities at play, we've noted that and where we've had to make some changes and adjustments modest in, really, as you look through it from my perspective, we've added those in. So as a practical matter, the process is we have to be putting these in what's called change orders. There's a form that you see attached, it's kind of the financial workup. The local building committee, which is this committee, has to approve that, then we submit that up to the state. There's a timeliness issue on these things for Department of Administrative Services, that you have to be submitting your change orders in a timely manner as you move along the way and getting it up to them. If you follow all of the math and the numbers on these things, essentially, what this does in total is move around the money and pay out of our contingencies for these change orders such that we're not adding anything to the budget at all. The guaranteed price of the project remains at $41,99,199.63. We continue at this point to have money in both the CM contingency of about, exactly, $237,250.84. I'm sorry, that's in the owner's contingency, and in the CM contingency, we have $332,804.82 remaining. So we basically moved money around when we did that amendment with the construction manager to allow for us to pay through those soil change orders, and we pulled out of the contingency to pay for, from the CM contingency, and then we pulled out from the owner contingency to pay for the balance of the change orders. But I think we remain confident that we're on budget in these change orders. I would just note the work that Newfield has done, and Brian is on the phone on Zoom here tonight, and Dave Cody from Waterbury DC. These things are all very tightly scrutinized as we go through, so we're making sure on the scene, on the site, that only what absolutely positively has to be added is added and getting as many credits as we can and pushing through as many creative ideas as possible. All in all, outside of that initial soil issues, I would say the balance of the change orders are, you know, what you would normally see, nothing really out of the ordinary and some of the ups and downs in the project. So with that, I'll stop, and if there's specific questions, we've got Brian here and Dave Cody from Waterbury DC. Bryce Senses is on as well from Friar Architecture, and we can dive into any of the specifics in as much detail as you'd like.
Thank you, Will. First off, any building committee commissioners, any questions on any of these change orders? How about Rocco? Is that a hand?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jess.
Looks like I don't see anyone from the committee. I would ask for the extended committee. Kerry Baker, any questions? I think I see Principal Ponte on here. Any questions from you?
No, I don't.
Well, thank you for joining us.
Jason.
Rock, what do you got?
Yeah, well, how far along is the construction? Is it 30% done, 40% done? Because my question is, they have these change orders and see roughly $600,000 left in the contingency, and will that carry us along? I mean, next time, you know, if it's 60% done or whatever, or is it still on schedule?
Yeah, that's a great question, Rocco, and thank you for that. I'll turn it over to Brian and Dave in a second here. But where we are now essentially is the steel is just about complete, and we're in the process of enclosing the building, and the goal being to get that wrapped up as we get into the winter, and then we can keep on going right through the winter, doing the interior work and doing some more of the finishes. But really, if you've been to the site at all recently, we do intend to get you all out there before it gets too cold as we wrap up the steel, so you can visualize what we're talking about. But we're really pushing through, really head-on into that construction phase where the soil stuff is behind us now. That was a big headache. We had a little bit of a delay with the steel, with COVID, with the steel shop being shut down in Canada. We're kind of through that, and now we're really head-on into the construction piece. So, you know, we're still holding to the schedule and pushing hard to try to make up some time, and really, a lot of it's going to depend upon the winter and how that goes. But I would say, as we discussed on this committee before, the design itself was specifically and strategically done to really mirror what we did at Carrington and to not have, you know, with all due respect to Friar, you know, we asked them not to have a lot of flash and not a complexity. So we're confident that as we move into the building piece of it, this is going to click right along. But I'll turn it over to Brian and Dave and Bryce Senses from Friar to speak to where we are in construction schedule and the specific point where we are right now as far as the process.
Yeah, all right. Good evening, everyone. Rocco, to address your immediate question about percent complete, I would say we're roughly 40%. It's a little deceiving because in the new A Wing, we actually just had an in-wall rough inspection today for electrical and plumbing, so it is deceiving. Area A, the roof is going on, we're watertight, we're getting walls closed up, there's mechanicals being installed. Where all the way down in Area D, we just recently completed the foundations in the slab, and we've actually started steel erection on the last piece of the building. So while it is deceiving overall, the project is probably roughly 40% complete. The good news is we continue to work on value engineering items between Friar, ourselves, Waterbury Development, even every little thing, $1,500 credit for hardware for a change that comes in. We're grabbing everything we can to continue to get it back to the project. Aside from the contingencies that Will had spoke to, we have built in with all of our trade contractors, as we normally do with our bid packages, a series of allowances for unforeseen conditions, for schedule acceleration, for Saturdays, additional blocking, a lot of miscellaneous items. So we feel pretty confident we probably have close to another $100,000, $110,000 packed away ourselves to work with the trades to help get through some of these. So it's tight, there's no doubt about it. We've been a little concerned from day one, but we feel pretty confident based on where we are at now with what's left, we should be in very good shape. Because as Will said, what we've encountered to date, some of the change orders in front of you tonight, these are normal run-of-the-mill, you know, due to a phased construction project. There's some scope gaps, some things kind of missed in between the phases. The rest of it, the lion's share, really was the unsuitable soils and the rock that was all really unforeseen. Unfortunately, that was, you know, upwards of probably $800,000 or $900,000 worth of what was spent to date. So the fact that there's only, I think, under $100,000 so far in contingencies being taken out outside of the rock and soils, I think we're in pretty good shape. So I'll see if Bryce or Dave have any other comments.
Thanks, Brian.
Bryce Senses from Friar. I don't have much to add, and Brian, I think it's a good point that you talked about our use of value engineering to try to bring back as much value to this project as we can. So I think it's something we're accomplishing, and we're doing our best to keep the number tight. Dave?
Yeah, I'll second that. I mean, we, as a team, we're scrutinizing everything that comes in, trying to make sure that anything that a contractor is claiming as an additional is at least weighed against what should have been done, what should have been provided, and we're making sure that before any change order is granted to a trade contractor that it's really something that they are due. That's about all I've got to add.
Yeah, I would just wrap it up by echoing the statements of everybody, and I think Brian said it better than I did. The change orders in front of you, once you take out the, what we knew was a big number with the soils and unforeseen rock situation, you know, it's really relatively modest when you think about the project of this size. The change orders we're talking about getting to this sort of 40% phase, and that is a credit to the team pushing through these things. And I mean, I could tell you a couple of different stories, but suffice it to say, when we've, just to echo what Bryce was saying with, and Dave, we've been hit by some contractors giving us one claim or another, you know, getting everybody around the table with socially distancing and masks to work through these things, we've really found paths through, and even with the unsuitable soils, that first started, it was well north of where we ended up, and it was really due diligence and working hard and going back and looking at the plans again and again and again, that we found some things. And there's many stories like that, that we found a way through, either with the contractors coming up with an idea or Brian or Tom from Newfield, Bryce and Mike from Friar, and of course, Dave and Kenny Russo have done a great job at WTC. So we have a number of different sets of eyes and lots of experience on it. Michael Blank, Raj and I have been engaged considerably as well and checking in, and our friends from the state, we've had down to the project a number of times, and they've been very impressed by the work done by the team.
Thank you, Will. Appreciate that. Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Bryce. Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it for your input there. Do I have anything else from the commissioners? All right, not seeing any. Then with that objection, I would ask for one motion to approve change orders two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight for the Wendell Cross Elementary School project. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Looks like the ayes have it. This will move to the board. That's the only item on tonight's agenda. So I would look for a-
Jason, if I may?
Yes, Will.
Sorry, to take this opportunity to thank you for your leadership on this committee. For those who don't know, this will be our last chance or time. We have Jason serving as our chair. This committee is moving off the board. It's really been a pleasure, speaking on behalf of the team, to work with you on this project through our selections and getting this off the ground, and you've been very helpful, and your questions have been very insightful, and your support has really been appreciated. I did mention that we do want to get everyone out for a tour before it gets too cold, and we'd really be honored to have you join us for that.
I appreciate that. I know the Ulogies are starting this early, but I do thank you. It's been a pleasure to be part of this. You know, when I first got on the board, I was very frank that I knew nothing about education, and I still very well may not, but I knew finances and I knew a little bit of building. So it was always exciting that I could help anywhere I could, and it's been exciting to see as many buildings go up in the past 10 years, and I look forward to completing this one as well. So thank you for those kind words. Now, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everybody. We stand adjourned. I'll see most of you in 14 minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Orso?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
I do, Commissioner. And tonight, we keep in remembrance Michael T. Licaria. He was a former substitute teacher in Waterbury Public Schools. And he was 31 years old. He passed away on October 10 of 2020. Let us remember him and his family, our school system, and our children and staff.
All right. Mode of science, please. Okay. All right, the pledge of allegiance, everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Of America. And to the republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice. Swear all. For all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Orso?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno? Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Still here.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone? President Pagano? Is Melissa there? She join us yet? No. Okay. Tom did say he might be a few minutes late.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, I need a motion, Commissioner Hernandez, I need a motion to receive and place on file communications as listed.
Motion to receive and place on file communication as listed.
Second. I get a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Say no. All right, the ayes have it, motion passes. I need a motion, Commissioner Brown, I need a motion to approve the meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes of September 17, 2020, I mean, 2020.
A motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 17, 2020.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, I understand we have no one that wishes to address the board. So we will move on to the item number seven, superintendent's announcements.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioners. I do not have a lot of announcements to make tonight, just an update on where we are in the district. We are moving along in our 20-plus something days of operation after the reopening of school on September 8. While we have had some notifications of COVID positive, we have taken every step in every situation and worked through it with the assistance of the entire team that has worked tirelessly to gather the accurate information, share it with everyone, and make a decision that's going to be in the best interest of our students, our faculty and staff, and for the health of all of our school system. While we have had two or three temporary, all virtual situations, we have not had a situation that would merit the school system to go into virtual as an entire school system. And I'm very pleased with the work that we're doing. I ask everyone to remain vigilant in assuring that not only are they taking care of themselves and their families by wearing masks and keeping the social distancing, but also be cognizant of the fact that activities that occur in the community at home after hours also have an impact on what happens within our schools. Unfortunately, as we navigate a pandemic, which is most unusual for all of us, we recognize that there are no quick fixes to any of this. What we recognize is that we have to be vigilant, we have to be attentive to the fact that the actions of each individual affects the whole. And so I would ask that all of us continue to be very careful as we go out, knowing that we've had a number of our COVID cases that were our virtual learners. So it is not indicative of it only being a result of reopening a school. It's consequential of everything that's happening with a virus that has yet to have a vaccine and the fact that we are still going through some reoccurrences and some spikes within the nation and specifically a very small spike in Connecticut. But I do believe that with continued vigilance and careful attention to wearing masks and PPEs and social distancing, we can continue to navigate this so that our learning can occur both in an in-person learning environment for our children and our teachers, and also for virtual, for those who have opted for the virtual option. We want to also let everyone know that we are in receipt of one of the shipments of new computers that after they are going to be loaded by our IT department, who has done a phenomenal job. I want to thank our IT department for all of the work that they do in not only preparing the computers for being issued, but also for troubleshooting several issues that will be ongoing when you are moving an entire district to virtual and a one-to-one implementation of technology across the district. When, while we have received this shipment, we anticipate that after they are ready for distribution, communication will be forthcoming for all of the schools so that students that have not received a computer will be able to get one, and students that have had issues with a computer that is broken, we will be able to replace it and then be able to repair the computer that is not functioning to a level that perhaps that computer becomes a backup computer for us as we move forward into our one-to-one implementation. Also very pleased with our academic teams, both at the district level and on the school level, as our teachers have been very intentional about how they are learning and how they continue to learn in a virtual environment and how they've prepared some outstanding lessons for their students. And want to thank the parents for engaging and making certain their students are logged on. At this time, it is very commendable that we have located our students. We can verify where our students are in the learning environment. We have over 11,000 students that are connected with us, you know, virtually in a totally virtual environment. But we are very pleased with the nearly, nearly 40% of our students who are in person. And want to thank the teachers and the families for working so closely to keep us informed. Whenever there is indication that someone is not feeling well, we continue to stress if someone is not feeling well, they are to remain home, and we can make accommodations. If they feel well enough to go virtual, they will go virtual. If they feel too ill to go virtual, we will troubleshoot that. And our principals have been excellent in navigating that. And so we want to continue to move forward because I do believe that an in-person learning has some advantages that if we went totally virtual, we might lose. But at the same time, we are also preparing ourselves so that we can continue to learn both in-person and virtual because it's critically important for the advancement of our students academically. We have a very strong focus on the social and emotional. We will continue to have that. But we will not lose sight of the fact that academics are also important for all of us, and we want to make certain the lessons are aligned to the standards and that the delivery of those lessons will also be able to assist our students in not only catching up, but moving forward as we progress academically and we follow new guidance and directions for the entire state of Connecticut. As I shared earlier, I think that next month at our work session, there will be, we will move forward with not only the careful laying out of our strategic plan, but I also believe that the board members will be able to see portions of our audits that were conducted with futures for our special education department. And as we move forward, we will begin to share that with the board as well as others and begin to see how that fits into our strategic plan as we move our district forward, even in the pandemic. So this is my only update for the board for this evening.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Are there any questions? All right.
Through the chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. And prayers to your mom and everybody who's suffering from COVID. I just had a question. How are we doing with the teacher shortages? I know the last workshop you listed some teacher shortages. I was wondering where we are.
Yes, we are still actively recruiting our teachers. We still have some critical positions that have not been filled. We know that they are going to be increasingly challenges, challenging to fill. And while I am optimistic about filling some of them, I'm also realistically stating that we're not going to fill all of the vacancies that we currently have within the district. You did ask at one of the board meetings whether the number of resignations and the number of retirees and the number of teachers that had resigned after the opening of school was that most unusual for this time of year. And I have obtained the responses from our human capital department. It is not an unusual number. I will tell you that it's not acceptable that we lose so many teachers at the beginning of school, but it is very typical for us to have a number of teachers either decide to resign or to retire, and that we receive notification at the beginning of the school year, such as the long list that you saw in September. And that is a big loss for us because at this time, and definitely whenever someone resigns in August and September, every time that happens, those positions, especially if they are a critical shortage position, becomes increasingly impossible to fill during the school year. But what I will add is that we've had a number of our outstanding teachers who have stepped up and they've accepted additional classes. And because of their commitment and devotion to the students and the district, we have been able to capture some of the class loads by distributing them to teachers who have opted to accept an additional teaching period, and we're very grateful for that. In the absence of that, we would have many children without a teacher.
Wow. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Appreciate that. With President's comments, I'm just going to skip over that and just again wish our president speedy recovery and to get back here to our meetings. We do not have a student representative. There's no student comments, Dr. Ruffin. Again, we are working on that.
We are.
Okay. All right, so I move on to item number 10, Committee on School Personnel, Commissioner Stango, item 10.1, please. Okay, unmute yourself.
Yeah.
Unmute yourself. Thank you. I saw your mouth moving, I said. No, one more.
I'll be comforted in retirement to know that something.
Charles? There you go. Okay. Hit the mic. How's that? There you go. Item 10.1, Charles.
All right, 10.1, regarding the Crosby High School. This agenda item was removed from our special meeting last week, was postponed. So here it is tonight to So here it is tonight again. The, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends the approval of the appointment of the Crosby High School principal, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Discussion.
Dr. Ruffin.
Yes. Is this my time?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Yes, commissioners. This evening, I recommend Kathy Newmark as the interim principal of Crosby High School. Kathy has served as an assistant principal at the school for at least five years. She has demonstrated very strong leadership. She currently serves and works alongside the interim principal at this time, who has come out of retirement to assist Crosby in the absence of a principal. Kathy has demonstrated strong leadership and very strong commitment to continuing quality work at Crosby High School. And it is my recommendation that she be appointed as the interim principal at this time.
All right. Any further discussion? Questions? Commissioner Sweeney?
So, Dr. Ruffin, you're not going to appoint a principal at this time. You're going to appoint a interim? Correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so given that, I would make a motion that we return this item to Dr. Ruffin.
All right. Second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye to the motion.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. This is returned to the superintendent. All right, Charles, give us 10.2, please.
10.2 regarding the Hopeville principal appointment. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the appointment of Erica Lanza as the Hopeville School Principal effective immediately.
Second.
They get a second?
Second.
Discussion. Thank you. Discussion. Dr. Ruffin?
Commissioners, it's a pleasure to recommend Erica Lanza as the principal of Hopeville. After Ms. Ponte has been assigned as the principal of Wendell Cross, Ms. Lanza was the interim at the time at Hopeville. She has demonstrated strong leadership and a commitment to the children and to the families of Hopeville Elementary School. So it's a pleasure for me to recognize and appoint and recommend Erica Lanza as the principal of Hopeville.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Any further discussion? All right. Okay, Commissioner Orso.
I just wanted to add to Dr. Ruffin. I was happy to be in Level One interviews and I think that these are very excellent choices.
Thank you. The discussion. All right, if not, roll. Carry.
You want a roll call?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Yes.
Nine zero, motion carries.
Congratulations. Okay, we are on item number 11, consent calendar. Does anyone wish to remove something from the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Vice President.
All right, top, top. Yes. Commissioner Tom Vanstone.
Last time you have to put the first name in front of that, by the way.
I did. Commissioner Tom Vanstone.
Thank you. I would like to remove 11.10, please.
All right. Anything else? All right. All right, so I will read the consent calendar with the remaining items. Was there anything else? Okay. All right, consent count, 11.1. 11.1, committee hall, request approval for a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the State Education Resource Center, also known as CIRC, for professional learning to support, promote, and develop racial equity in education. Item 11.2, committee of the hall, request approval of a memorandum of understanding with Community Mental Health affiliates for cognitive behavioral intervention for traumas in schools, CBITS, and bounce back, also known as BB. 11.3, committee of the hall, request approval of an agreement with Children's Community School, Inc. for transition services for students with disabilities. Item 11.4, committee of the hall, request approval of an agreement with Bell Academy and Cosmetology LLC, transition services for students with disabilities. Committee on Finance, request approval of an agreement with Waterbury Youth Services, Inc. for Tuancy Prevention Services as required by the Youth Services Brill Grant. Committee on Finance, request approval for the 2020-2022 consolidation grant application. 11.7, Committee on Finance, request approval of transfers in the 2020 through 2021 fiscal year budget. 11.8, Committee on Finance, request approval of an agreement with Waterbury Symphony Orchestra Incorporated for music mentoring services. And finally, 11.9, Committee on Finance, request approval for a contract with ESS Northeast LLC for substitute teacher and paraprofessional staffing. I will entertain, Commissioner Brown, I entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar, items 11.1 through 11.9.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Motion passes. All right, let's see. Commissioner Jason Vanstone, item 11.10, 11.10.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on Building and School Facilities, the Superintendent of Schools recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve a real estate contract for the property known as 119 South Maid Road and 116 Beecher Avenue in Waterbury, Connecticut, also known as 61 and 67 South Maid Road, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second. All right, discussion. Okay, Commissioner Tom Vanstone.
I will defer to Commissioner Jason Vanstone and then I will take up my time.
All right. Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you. That means he's going to go on a rant, so I'll get out of the way.
Yeah, I know. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you, Commissioner Vanstone. In my opinion, while this is not necessarily the perfect building for us, it's the perfect building right now in the East End. I believe for the price tag, which is significant and for the work we will have to put into it, which is probably also significant, it is worthwhile. If you see the amount of money we've spent on new schools to make sure that we have enough space for our kids, we're regularly talking 40 million, 50 million, $68 million. And Duggan might still be going to make sure that we have somewhere for our children. And from day one on this board, and I know everyone who was on the board with me at that time, we knew the East End was a problem. Wendell Cross certainly is going to help that a little bit. But I think that this purchase of this school's facility with the proper upgrades will go a long way to help some of that overcrowding in the East End. My personal hope would that it would be a neighborhood school. I know there's some other programs that also need homes, but we've been telling the residents of the East End now for at least 10 years that we hear their calls, we hear what they need. And I think this is an opportunity for us to put another school there to allow those neighborhood kids to stay close to home and to have an education level second to none. So I'm in favor of this tonight. And as I said, I hope it becomes a neighborhood school for those folks. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Jason Vanstone. Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam Vice President, through you. I agree in principle with everything Commissioner Jason Vanstone stated. I have been a major, major person in favor of doing something for the east side of Waterbury. We thought we had a plot of land way up on a hill tucked away. It would have been actually even a challenge to get our roadways to the location. There was a small contingency of city folks that were against that. And I was so in favor of actually doing a brand-new school to help with the situation mainly at Chase and Generali. And at that time, I don't know, I guess that's almost five years ago now, maybe more. We did not pull it through. There's a lot of threats of putting on a city ballot, all kinds of things, and basically we backed off. And in hindsight, I wish we hadn't because it would have been so great for the east side of the school or the east side students. So in that theory, I am so happy we're finally doing something to help with the situation we're in. However, and of course, no one's surprised when I say however, I do have some questions that I've asked and actually Mr. Clark has been tremendous at getting me information I needed to answer some of my questions. But still, some are either not answered or maybe not to my satisfaction. So I really am not trying to be critical. It's the right move. I do agree with that. However, there are some issues I still have that I think, for me anyway, it's the right time to ask these questions. So as I go through them, again, Will, I really appreciate everything you fed me along the way on my questions because it has taken a lot away from what I was questioning. But I'm still concerned in a few areas and I'll go one by one, questions slash statements. And the first one that's been a major concern of mine, and Mr. Clark knows it, is with the soil samples. The answers I've received is we are not proceeding with any requests for soil samples. The, it does not appear anything in the bill of sale includes soil samples. And I'm going to tell you why I'm concerned. I did look at all the public records and different than a private ownership of a public record, where if you look up, and I'll use my property as an example, any request to the city for a building permit to do changes to my property are listed publicly on the website. Kind of cut off at 2006, so I'm not, I know I had building permits prior to that, but they just don't appear on the website. In the case of this piece of property, the tab on the public website where you talk about building permits or changes to the property, this property, that tab is non-existent. So there's no way to look back on what they applied for and/or granted for changes to the property. And the reason I bring up soil samples is what I do know about the property just in my history of being in Waterbury. This is probably, Will can correct me, but probably about 50% of its property is a parking lot. The only thing on the public website says something was done to the parking lot/pavement in 1978 and nothing after. I do know this property has held carnivals with rides, which certainly brings in potential issues with the ground. The convent, which has been admitted to having probably our biggest challenge to upgrade and then do something with the convent, also shows on the plot that it has a garage. So I don't know what's going on in that garage over the years. And that is, those are my reasons for asking about soil samples. I'll bring some of the folks back to the beautiful park we now have in Bunker Hill, on Bunker Hill Avenue. That is beautiful. It has a handicap playground. It has basketball courts, which I've always said that our folks that use that basketball court have been very good. When I drive to work, when I drove to work before COVID, they never left anything around the playground. The garbage pails were used. They were full, but they used them. It also has two baseball fields for T-ball-ish type baseball. And certainly in the middle of that, they play soccer. But when we redid that as a city, that park was closed for a very, very, very long time because of what we found in the soil. So it worries me that we are not looking at soil samples. So my question would be, why are we not asking for soil samples already on record? And why are we not doing our own as part of taking on this piece of property? And let me go through them, Mr. Clark, if you may, just to go through them and then I'll step aside because I am not being argumentative for this property. I just still have open questions. And then expected upgrades. We've also, as part of this project, set aside $800,000 on top of the 1.5 million sale price to do expected upgrades. Now, I made a personal decision this week not to go on the tour and that personal decision because it started out with three or four of us commissioners going on a tour to it being opened up to three different boards of the city. It still sounds like the attendance wasn't that great. And maybe I still should have gone, but I made a personal decision during COVID not to go into a big group. You can fault me for that, fine, but that was my personal decision. So some of what I read about the tour is that we're talking about outside of the boilers, which we need to. And Mr. Clark has shown me that they have outlived their useful life. So we obviously have to go after those. And other than that, some paint to make it pretty. But the areas of my concern are the boilers. And also I read that we also have to pull up carpeting that has been down for, we don't know how long, which if you go back enough years, the underlaying of carpet had some properties that we really shouldn't be interested in for our students. And with the high level of asthmatic students we have, the ripping up of carpet concerns me. So that's that category for upgrades. And I find it hard to believe it just needs a paint job because I think we could do better than $800,000 to apply a paint job. I mentioned the boilers, I mentioned the paint, and I mentioned to some degree the upgrades. So if I could just get some answers, and I don't think all the answers can come tonight, which gives me difficulty in voting in favor of. Being in favor of dealing with our situation with Generali and Chase and over a population, we can only be thankful that during COVID, only about 30, 35% of those students went back to that school. Because if we had to do social distancing at those two schools with even if it was a 50% return to school population, it would have been an amazing challenge and I don't know how we would have dealt with it. So please understand my caution. It is not anything to do with needing this facility because we do. We really haven't been given a plan of what the expectation is, similar to some of the things that Commissioner Jason Vanstone brought up. similar to some of the things that Commissioner Jason Van Stone brought up. Is it a specialty school, right, an academy-type school? Is it something to move population to help with Generali and Chase? Okay, that'd be my preference. I still have the concerns I brought forward. So I'm struggling, and I'm not looking to stop this. I'm really not. But for me personally, as a commissioner, answering to the people who put us in these chairs, I still have a number of questions, which makes it difficult for me to be in favor of. Again, I want to really state that I am not saying drop this and run away by any means. We need to do something. We need to address this situation on the east side of Waterbury. So Will, please take my comments as my concerns and not criticism. But there are still a lot of unanswered responses that I I would still need. And of course, we're voting on it tonight, so it's going to affect my vote. So thank you, Madam Vice President. I just I just needed to put that out there, that these are my concerns. And certainly by no means an objection to moving something like this forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Will, do you want to address anything or before we move on?
No, if there's a specific question, I'd be happy to answer it. I would just note simply, I would put the the track record of our facilities department and budget department up against anyone. And the recent experience of St. Joe's, and those of you who went on the tour of that building, and those of you who went on the tour of St. Pete's, and and maybe even those of you who went to school in St. Pete's, it was better than then than St. Joe's was when we got in there. And in a couple of months, with every one of the concerns that Commissioner Van Stone can raise and about 20 others, we got it done. So I am completely confident that we can get this thing turned around very quickly in a cost-effective manner to provide a safe and healthy environment for students and programs. And I think we will follow a similar pattern. Frankly, carpeting for the asthmatic and allergies and so forth really should be out anyway. And you see us do that across the district. It's easier to clean. It's easier to maintain, particularly in this sort of COVID environment. You want to reduce that amount of felt and and carpet and furniture that can't be cleaned as easily as a surface as best you can in in the schools, and that would certainly be our plan, absolutely subject to the designs, desires of the 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 board and the superintendent for the ultimate purpose of the building. But other, really, other than the boilers is the big, big deal, which we all knew going in. And frankly, to make them more energy efficient is a much better deal for us anyway. You know, this is pretty close to a turnkey in in doing the cosmetics and the upgrades and the technologies. And the boilers are the big things, and then really fitting it up to suit the needs of what the board desires.
All right. Thank you, Will. Commissioner Sweeney, I see your fingers. Unmute, unmute.
So I graduated from St. Peter and Paul's. I think that's what Will is alluding to. And the school essentially in layout and in remarkably in condition is pretty much what I remember when I started there back, would have been in the 60s. So I'll tell you that I never played on anything but asphalt because that's what that school was surrounded with back in the 60s. It was asphalt on both sides. Only garage, I recall, is still there, but it is at the rectory building, and it was a parking garage for the for the priests. So the rooms are in the same general layout as they were. They're quite large. I would hope that in the face of COVID and not knowing how long this is going to last and the expectation that we are hoping to see this school actually open next year, that we wouldn't go putting up partitions and sectioning those off, but rather give the students some some good elbow room. The school started out when I went there, grade one through eight, and there were two classrooms of each grade. And most of our graduating classes were 60 students, so about 30, 30, anywhere from 30 to 35 students in a room. So they're they're pretty big rooms. And again, I had been in the school maybe about five years ago for a reunion and took a tour then. There's been some minor things. They they put in a library. They put in a science lab, but they took over classroom space to do that. So again, very little has changed in the building, but they seem to have kept the upkeep. I would agree with with Will that it looks worn, so it needs painting, needs polish. But I think I think it's a win-win for our Eastunders. Again, I had mentioned that I would like to see a straw-down chase and hopefully put that on tap for pre-K through eight through renovation because the space is there. I would hope that it would help with Generali as well. And I would hope that eventually we would look at Wallace for two pre-K through eights and sew up one side, at least one section of our city with pre-K through eights. So I I am fully in favor of this. I think the time is now. It's here, and we should take advantage of the opportunity. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, Commissioner Charles Stango.
Thank you. Just to comment on the on the purchase of the school. I I think it's probably the worst, the worst kept secret in the city of Waterbury that eventually, at some point in time, when all things are said and done, that we would be the owners of that school. We have our eyes on this building every time a building becomes empty, for whatever reason, that we have no control of from the other party. So I think that eventually, when the time came to get it, I think that it's our job to take it and to purchase it, of course. And I think that I'm I was surprised at the asking price. You can go to some places and buy a whole, a house that costs that much money in some parts of New England. So I think it's it's a good purchase, and I'm totally in favor of it. We mentioned a lot of things and possibilities to do with the building, and one thing that was always mentioned in the past was to use it as much-needed swing space when we have to force to redo another building someplace in the east end, which may in time happen. So if, at the very least, it'll work for swing space. I recall when Wendell Cross had to go, the students had to go somewhere. Some of the parents said, why can't we go to St. Peter and Paul? Well, we couldn't because we did not own the building. Now we're going to own the building, and that will be a possibility for swing swing space along with all the other things that were mentioned to use it for. Certainly, it will be a building that will be used. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. I don't see. Okay. We are in discussion, so we will, let's do a roll call. Carrie, roll call vote on this, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
No.
Eight-one motion carries.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, we will move on to item number 13, Committee of the Hall. Commissioner Sweeney, can you take that for me, please?
Item 13.1, ladies and gentlemen, the committee of the hall recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve of the year-two performance bonus in accordance with the current employment agreement with Dr. Verna D. Ruffin.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion. All right. Any discussion?
I would just like.
Who is this? That's, okay, Commissioner Brown, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I would just say that I'm so excited to have Dr. Ruffin with us, and I believe this is this this is well-earned, given given what we've been through in the past couple of years. So I'm very, very happy that we're doing this tonight.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? All right, I don't see anyone waving. Okay. Nothing? I'm just looking again, just to make sure. All right. All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Commissioner Sweeney, Sweeney, excuse me, the next item, please, 13.2.
Item 13.2, ladies and gentlemen, the committee of the hall recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve a new employment agreement with Dr. Verna D. Ruffin, Superintendent of Schools as attached. Second.
All right, have a motion made and second discussion. All right. No discussion? Okay. Yes, I see him. Commissioner Stango, please.
Thank you. I think certainly that it's a right thing to do at this time for a superintendent to extend their contract. We know that that we're fortunate to have her, and the work that she does is unbelievable, the time she puts in. And in superintendent world, this is the time to extend the contract. No superintendent goes year to year. She has to look at, and we're providing that window of time when we hope that she remains with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, I don't see anyone waving their hands. Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Okay, Commissioner Jason.
Commissioner.
Yes, Dr. Ruffin.
I want to thank all of the commissioners for the for the new contract agreement and for the performance bonus. I want to tell you that I'm very excited about working with all of you, and I'm so very excited that you approved for continuing employment here in Waterbury. I can't think of a better place to be, working with the best people and staff, and I am the best board, and I do appreciate all of you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Moving on to item number 14, Committee on Building and School Facilities. Commissioner Jason Van Stone, item 14.1, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ladies and gentlemen, the committee on building and school facilities recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the use of school facilities at no charge by the following school organizations and or state departments. Number one, the registrar of voters would like Kennedy, Gil Martin, Kingsbury, Sprague, Westside, Regan, Carrington, Maloney, Wilson, Crosby, Tinker, Reed, and Chase on Tuesday, November 3rd, for something or other, 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And Dr. Ruffin and Emery Brights would like Kennedy, Tuesday, October 20th, for 6:30 to 8:30. And Thursday, October 22nd, from 3:30 to 5:30 for the family in Consumer Science Room. This is to help the United Way make some masks. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Thank you. Second? Okay, who seconded, please?
I did, Juanita.
Okay, thank you, Juanita. Discussion? Discussion? No. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Commissioner Jason Van Stone, 14.2, please.
Thank you again, Madam Vice President. Ladies and gentlemen, the committee on building and school facilities recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the school, the use of school facilities by outside organizations, groups, and/or waiver requests. They're not subject to fees or waiver due to the time used and of previous waiver. First is the Waterbury Bridge of Success would like the Reed Parking Lot, Monday, October 19th, from 2:00 to 7:00 for their Farm-to-Family Fresh Produce Drive. And the second is the YMCA would like the Crosby Track on 10/14, 10/28, 11/11 from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for their running club. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Can I get a second? Thank you.
Second.
All right, discussion? All right, give me a minute. Anyone wish, no discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. All right, item 16, 16.1, Commissioner Orso, if you would, please.
Do you want to do item 15?
We're now item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I skip?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, item, Commissioner Sweeney. I don't know why I skipped over you. Item 15.1, please. Sorry about that.
Item 15.1, ladies and gentlemen, the committee on policy and legislation recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the revised Individualized Education Program, Special Education Program Policy Number 6159 as distributed and attached.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay. If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, motion passes. Commissioner Sweeney, 15.2, please.
Item 15.2, the committee on policy and legislation recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the revised reporting of child abuse, neglect, and sexual assault policy number 5141.4 as distributed and attached.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All right, don't see anyone waving their hands. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Okay, now we move on to 16, Commissioner Orso, 16.1, please.
Okay, 16.1, the committee on finance requests approval of a professional services agreement with Cormier Consulting LLC for teacher and administrator professional development.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Any discussion? No? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. All right, Commissioner Orso, 16.2, please.
16.2, ladies and gentlemen, the committee on finance requests approval to apply for the Connecticut Department of Administrative Services Alliance District School Buildings Grant Program.
Second.
Okay, can I get a second? Through the chair. Thank you. Discussion? All right. Charles, were you raising your hand?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposition? Motion passes. Commissioner Orso?
Madam President, Madam Vice President, motion to add to the agenda, item 16.3, Amendment to Professional Services Agreement with CREC.
All right, can I get a second, please?
Second. Point of order.
We're in discussion now. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Point of order. It should have been added at the beginning of the agenda. Just a point of order. I I won't stop it, but it should have been added at the beginning of the agenda, at the head of the agenda.
All right. Tara, is Tara on?
Yes, I am.
All right, Tara, can we proceed with this?
I believe you can proceed, but technically, it should have gone, it should have been voted onto the agenda at the beginning, and the vote would have proceeded now.
Got it. Okay. We'll make a note of that. All right, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Commissioner Orzo?
Motion to approve amendment number one to the professional services agreement with Capital Regional Education Council, CREG, for school psychology services.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay. Discussion? No. All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, motion passes. All right, let's think. We're moving on to, uh, Commissioner Jason Van Stone. I need a motion to receive a place on file superintendent's notification to the board.
Madam Vice President, uh, look, uh, make a motion to receive in place on file items seventeen point one, seventeen point two and seventeen point three.
Thank you. Second, please?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Item eighteen, unfinished business of preceding meeting only. Any business of that nature. All right. All right, move on to item number nineteen, other unfinished, new and miscellaneous business. Commissioner Tom Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, through you. Um, if I shut down my video, it's because, um, this is a little difficult for me for personal reasons, uh, and I can't, you know, sway anyone with my persona of, uh, maybe getting choked up. So if you lose my video, it was on purpose. Um, I would like to start this unfinished business by saying, I really appreciate what Commissioner Jason Van Stone, all his contributions to not just the education of our students, the attention to detail for our teachers, our parents and all extended family responsible for our students. Jason also really, for a lot of years, has contributed outside of education to the city of Waterbury. I'm going to turn my video off. Jason's special and he's been special to the city of Waterbury. He knows how I love him. And I will miss him more than anyone. I've kind of known Jason a long time. And I guess everyone knew that. It's really difficult for me to say goodbye to him as a commissioner and a person that has, that have a positive life for the city of Waterbury. He went to grammar school in our public school system. He played sports in our public school system. And he's always been there for all of us. He's a dedicated public servant from day one. And on the board especially for his attention to detail. He's held positions of committee leadership and leader to this board in general. Sorry. I will get to see Jason forever. This board, I hope realizes how much we will miss him. I hope the city of Waterbury realizes how much we will miss him. Jason is actually, and this is big for an Irish family, is the oldest that we thought will carry on the Van Stone name. Well, over the last forty years, we brought on a lot of Van Stones to carry on that name. And that may not be politically correct this day, in these days to say, right, the male can, it carries on the name, but that's where Jason is to our family. Jason, I love you and I'm going to miss you, uh, in political life, in public life. Uh, but I know you're with me forever. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else that would like to make comments at this time? Okay, Commissioner Orzo, your hand.
Uh, Jason, I want to personally thank you. When I got into this, uh, political arena, you were the first one that, uh, backed me up and helped me, helped me through the election cycle. And you were the person I relied on. Uh, you were the person I relied on when I got on the board. For any questions, you were there for me. And, um, I know we've only worked together on this for a year. We've known each other for years, but we only worked together for a year and it's been my honor and my pleasure to work with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more, Commissioner Hernandez?
Well, Jason, I don't know what I'm gonna do because, you know, you always used to text me when I forgot to say something or couldn't remember what went next. Um, but I wish you the best. I will miss you a lot. You have taught me a lot as well, but I wish you nothing but the best and you will be missed. Love you.
All right, anyone else wish to comment? Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Brown?
Well, Jason, uh, I have to say, we, we, we got into politics at the same time. We both served the same amount of time on the board. And, uh, you know, your professionalism and your, I love your sense of humor. I'm going to really miss that, that dry humor, uh, that, that really, uh, that, that really shows your kind personality. You've always been professional and, uh, it's been really a pleasure to work with you. So best of luck and all that you do.
All right, anyone else? I don't see anyone waving. No one else? Okay, Commissioner Charles Stango.
Thank you. I think Anne's hand was up. I think I'm going to let her go first if that's okay with you.
Go ahead, Anne. You're next, Commissioner Stango. Anne?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
So this guy over my shoulder here. Jason, this is my favorite picture without a doubt. So I know Charles is gonna follow, follow and he's gonna have just some great words of wisdom put together and I can never top that. So I wrote words. I wrote common sense, reason, level-headed, respectful of ideas and people, collaborative, always a conversation, never a confrontation. Regardless of how a vote would go, Jason was always behind what the majority decides. And then he wore flag crazy to ensure that all decisions benefited students. I have been honored to serve beside you and I will miss you on this board and I will miss seeing you on a regular basis. Please don't stay away too long. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna poke him a little bit. Is that okay with everybody?
Please do.
The floor is yours.
Um, Jason, just a couple of memories here. Um, you can believe them or choose not to, but it's true. Um, before you were sworn in the first time, a little over ten years ago, I remember that some people were concerned that you were way too young and a little bit rough around the edges to serve on this board. And I tried to put their minds at ease. I told them that I would keep an eye on you and I would mentor you. Now I finally got you to the point where you're making some sense and you're showing some promise and now you're turning around and you're leaving. It always seems to happen that way, but we have to move on. Then I remember, just after you took your seat on the board again, over ten years ago, these same people commented to me again that, you know, that new kid, well, he looks like Clark Kent, they said to me. And I guess by extension, looks like Superman. Again, it's true. I think it was the glasses and the haircut that did it. I'm not sure. Clark Kent, maybe. I can see that. He's mild-mannered. He's a commissioner for the Board of Education, a courageous, courageous fighter of hate. Fights for kids, truth, justice and American way. Yeah, I can see all that. But Superman, not so much. So if not Superman, then who is this Jason Van Stone that we talk about that made so many people sad tonight? Well, he's a model of how to perform in public service. We should make a poster of it and a new board member that comes in should be able to study that, uh, and follow suit. He is a model of decorum and comportment. Everyone should treat people the way he treats them and says and speaks to the board the way he speaks to the board. He is always appropriate and he's always professional. Again, let's study this. And most importantly, he is always, he always puts the children of this district first. Never fails to do that. So I want to say good luck. I want to say wishing you only the best. I want to say stay in touch and I want to say that I will personally miss you on the board also. So that's all I got. Oh, one more thing, one more thing. Did anyone here ever see Jason Van Stone and Superman in the same room at the same time? I know I didn't. So maybe, maybe there's something to that. It's a possibility. I'm not sure, but we'll have to take a vote on that. And I'll bet you the vote would be, yes, he is kind of like a Superman.
Oh.
So with that, I make a motion to adjourn? No, I take it back. I'm not gonna.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, don't see any. All right, Jason, before I give you the floor, um, I want to, oh, okay, Commissioner, uh, Dr. Ruffin?
Yes, I, I, I definitely want to take this opportunity to personally thank you, uh, for your service and, uh, and I will remember forever the first time that I met you, uh, and had an opportunity to talk with you and, and with Tom as you came to visit in Tennessee and then to continue the, um, developing the relationship as a member of this commissioner, uh, and this Board of Education. So I want to thank you. I could always, uh, account on when I called you, you've always responded. We had very candid conversations and I feel that you always guided me in the right direction and I want to thank you for that. As superintendent, that means everything. Uh, and you know, I feel that I have a great relationship with my board members and I can talk with all of you. I feel that I'm losing one person. I don't know who else is going to be here, but certainly I knew that I could always count on you to give me sound advice and, and I appreciate that. I will miss you dearly. I know you're going to be outstanding wherever you go and whatever you do and I want to wish you the very best in your continued success as you move on. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Um, I, I want to like just say ditto to what everybody else has stated to, to Jason and I will, you know, text you again. I don't want to get emotional. Um, I'm gonna have to do what Tom probably did, but, but I just want to wish you the best of luck. Uh, thank you for everything, for replying to my text messages when I had a lot of questions, um, or was, or didn't understand something on the agenda or a particular item. Um, you've done a lot to the community. I don't want to repeat some of the stuff because Charles, who can go after you, but that was amazing. You should have just signed all our names on that speech. Um, but you, you will be missed, Jason, and I'm sure I'll still be texting you and bothering you. So best of luck to you. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. All right, Jason, before I give you the floor, I just want to thank you. Uh, it's, it's been, um, you know, really good knowing you. Um, what I really appreciate is that the support that I needed at certain times that I didn't think I would get from you and you surprised me and, and supported, you know, things, particularly with parents, uh, parent engagement, um, different things, uh, you know, the student representation, um, et cetera. And I was really impressed, uh, by that. So I want to thank you. I want to wish you luck. Um, and, and not to say that you over, I think you were in the marketing for the, the, the location. I go to get my eyeglasses, so I am pleased to know that, you know, but, uh, you know, just good luck, best luck to you. Don't be a stranger and I wish you the best of luck in whatever you do. And, uh, again, don't be a stranger. And so with that, I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Um, if I knew it was gonna be like this, I would retire years ago. This, this outpouring, um, of support is touching. Uh, you know, and for all the tears, I'm, I'm moving like eight minutes away. So I'll be around if anyone, you know, unlike Commissioner Watt who said, lose my number, feel free to hold on to my number. Um, I'm not going anywhere. I'd be more than happy to, um, give you advice as bad as it may be. Um, but, but feel free to ring me up at any time. Um, you know, this board that, uh, I've had the pleasure of serving on now for the better part of the decade, um, I think in some ways is an aberration. Too much in politics nowadays is adversarial. It's angry. Um, we were never that. We were collegial. We had the ability to disagree without being disagreeable. And I wish there was more of that out there. I wanted to thank each of you. Um, you know, we are a board of ten, plus all of central office, plus all the teachers, the administrators. You know, we're a giant team and, uh, it's been a privilege to be part of it. Uh, and, and I'm gonna miss someone. I apologize ahead of time, but I'll start at the top. Doc Ruffin. You were an amazing leader in good times and an inspirational one, uh, in bad times. Uh, I remember that visit down there and I, I remember the ribs I had in Memphis. So thank you very much for that. Uh, those were incredible. Uh, it was great getting to meet you. It was great learning, um, about you, talking to all your colleagues and all the amazing things they said. Uh, continue to do a good job. Uh, Mr. Clark, a few years ago when Paul Wooddon retired, I said, man, I feel bad for the son of a gun who's gonna replace that guy. Um, but you have done, uh, more than an admirable job in that position. One that, uh, you know, to keep all the trains running on time in, in this district is not easy. So well done. It's been a pleasure having the opportunity to work with you. Uh, Darren, um, I want to thank you. Um, anytime an email came through or I read something online or something in the agenda that had a whole lot of, bunch of big words and educational jargon, I would immediately call you and you would break it down into small bite-sized chunks for me. So, uh, even I could understand it. Um, and, uh, I, I can't tell you how much I appreciated that. Uh, in many meetings, you set me up with the information I needed to make me look good. So I thank you for that, sir. Uh, Doreen, uh, man, I remember especially in the beginning. Uh, as soon as I got on the board, I was named Finance Chairman, which was probably a huge mistake, but whatever. Um, so poor Paul and Doreen had to sit down with me over and over again and walk me through how budgets in the, in the public sector worked because coming from the private sector, none of it made sense to me. I didn't understand where money was coming or going or how it was there. And, uh, you know, Doreen, uh, had, uh, the, the amount of patience, uh, to sit, sit and work through me and I'll, and I'll never forget that. Um, Doc Epperson and Noreen Buckley, the two of you are, um, incredible. Um, uh, parts of the central office that I know Doc, uh, relies on. Please keep working, uh, to make sure you, everything you guys do to, to back her up, to back up all these kids in Waterbury. You, you two are tremendous. Uh, Kathy Gabelson, um, your department ain't an easy one. Um, and the work you need to do every day to make sure that, that it's running on time, making sure that all those very special students are taken care of. Um, you do an amazing job. You do an amazing job. So Jada, I fought for this position for a long time. I fought too many times. The only time you read about the district in the papers, then we did something wrong. And albeit we do enough wrong to get in the paper a lot, I thought there was a lot of positive stories that just weren't getting out there. So keep fighting the fight. Make sure that all the people out there know just what a great job we do. Will Zuda, who has the best glamour shot anyone in the Water Republic schools could ever ask for. Thank you, especially during this, you know, last, you know, year or so where sometimes we take the guys for granted. But you really stepped up, you and your whole department, to make sure that not only can we see each other in these meetings, but, oh, no, the picture was better, go back to the picture. But to make sure that the kids in this district, thank you, sir, the kids in the district, the teachers in this district had the opportunity to still learn. So thank you very much for that. Juan, I thought you were a great principal and I see you growing into this new position and you're growing leaps and bounds every day. And I think it's, it was an inspired choice by the superintendent to put you there. And I want to wish you the best going forward. Tara, I got to know you before you were an employee. I generally don't like lawyers, but you were one of the exceptions to that rule. You're a tremendous negotiator. You can see through the BS before anybody and make sure that your clients, in this case, now us, come out on the prevailing side. So thank you very much for that. I don't think, I don't know if Mike's still on the phone or not, but Mike LeBlanc, even though you're not really an education department employee, the amount of work you do for our side of the street with professionalism and aplomb should be thanked over and over and over again. And I don't think these two people are, but Chris Harmon, who I've gotten to know pretty well in the past couple of years now, he and his maintenance staff, you know, from the big jobs like St. Joe's to the little ones beyond compare. And our corp counsel, Linda Webby, who makes sure the documents and such come out right by the time we get to them. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention a couple of formers. I've had the opportunity to work for three superintendents. All of them are tremendous. So in addition to Dr. Ruffin, I'd thank Dr. Sneed and Dr. Let. Paul Gudon, who I had mentioned earlier. He, you know, probably ruse the day I was first put on this board and then re-elected. The amount of time I sat in his office learning things. Anne Marie Collin and Dr. Saquera, Ron Frost, Bob Brinker, Melissa Baldwin, John Cross, George DiAgostino, Judge Mosley, Mike Yaman, the late John Herman. All tremendous people. And I would really be in trouble if I didn't mention the most important person in the school district, Carrie Swain. Thank you for making sure that, at least personally, on many nights, I knew where I was going. It wasn't an uncommon thing where I'd leave work, get in the car and start driving and really have no idea where I was going. And I'd shoot her a text at 5:30 and say, where's the workshop again tonight? Where's, where are we going? And without fail, she would answer. So thank you, Carrie. I want to thank, this is sounding like an Oscar speech now, geez. Some of the former folks that many of us served with. Felix Rodriguez, Brian McIntyre, Joanne D'Amelio, Paul DeAngelo, Colleen Flaherty Merritt, Greg Harkins, Kathy Awad, three, four, or five times, John Theriot. Former mayor, or current mayor, Larry was a former commissioner for many of us. He sat at the same table as us. I want to thank all of those people. I learned something from each of them. Pat Hayes, who was my first president. And I've had the opportunity to work under four presidents, Pat, Liz, Charles, and now Chuck. All tremendous, different leadership styles, but really all tremendous people. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Mayor Jar Jar. He's the one who appointed me to this crazy board in the first place. And I wanted to be an alderman. And he said, no, I'd rather, I'd rather it be a Board of Education or Commissioner. And despite my protests, he did it anyway. And I fell in love with this board. And anywhere, anytime I had the opportunity to tell people about government and what important jobs aren't and important jobs are, I tell them the most important job in any government is the Board of Education in your local town. And I believe that. It's the hardest working board. It's generally the least glorious board. But every decision we make affects people in real life. I want to thank all the administrators, the teachers, this, any of the staff who work for the Water Republic schools, the maintainers, food service, crossing guards, paraprofessionals, everybody. Back when I said it's a giant team effort, it truly is. I want to thank the students and their parents who put faith in me and all of us to do what's best for their kids. And now for my current members of this board. Karen, I heard what you just said and I agree. There were a number of policy things where we weren't at eye. But on a number of things, and I think the really important ones, we were. And I will never, I'll never take away from you how hard you work for minority in this city. You're a leader, not just of the minority community, but of people. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate that, you know, even when sometimes you don't have the most popular opinion on the board, you fight for it. And that's what, that's what the people deserve. Who next in this bratty bunch of screens here? Anne Sweeney. And by the way, that should be your background till the end of time. That should never change. Because always know I'm looking.
You got it, sir.
If I recall, that is a suit you did spill a glass of wine on at one point. That suit has been retired forever. But, but you're one of my favorite people on this board. And I'll incredibly miss you. Who do we got now? Melissa. Melissa, when you first came on, the energy you brought to this board kind of rejuvenated me. You know, halfway through the term, you know, sometimes you get that, you know, lull. But the energy you brought to this board, especially fighting for some of our special needs kids, re-energized me and reinvigorated me. So thank you very much for that. You're gonna continue to do great on this board. Charles Stango. When I got here 10 years ago, you were the old guy on the board. And while you correctly remember, I was the young kid. You're still the old guy on the board somehow. I'm not too sure how that has not changed. But you, your level of preparedness for every meeting has not missed a beat. I remember in one of our incarnations in the seating arrangement, I had the opportunity to sit next to you and I would look at these legal pads of notes for every agenda item. You never lacked for preparedness, sir. And you were a mentor of mine, you are a mentor of mine. So keep fighting the fight. Your voice is important on this board and never forget that. Rocco, when I heard a couple of years ago that you were in the Board of Education, I generally ask two questions. One, why? Because it's not something that we used to hear a lot. Everyone wanted to be something fancy like an alderman. So when anyone ever starts off wanting Board of Education, I'm inquisitive, intrigued, and want to make sure that they're in their right mind. And you, sir, are that. I will rest easier knowing someone who has a fluency with numbers is on this board to make sure that all the pennies are counted, to make sure that, you know, the people's money is spent wisely and I can certainly trust you to do that. Juanita. First couple of years were tough, kid. I was worried about you. You didn't always look like you're having a good time. But I can't tell you how happy I am. You two have a voice that deserves to be heard here. Lizzie. You're a great president. I used to make fun of people who would kind of deflect all the questions that we ever got on the Board of Edas with the answer that it's just for the children. You know, it, you know, it sometimes would wipe away hard decisions. It would, it would allow for spending of money that maybe I didn't agree with. But at the end of the day, I knew you really did do everything for the children. Sorry. I wish President Pagano could be here today. I wish him the speediest of recoveries and my heart is with him and his family. Another tremendous guy, an asset to this board. And, you know, his leadership this past term has been outstanding and you guys are all in good hands. Is that everybody? Oh yeah, Tom Van Stone. And he won't, he's right. He won't have to be Commissioner Tom Van Stone anymore. He can now just be Commissioner Van Stone and no one will argue. You know, keep fighting. You know, this board needs, needs dissenting voices sometimes. If nothing else, to keep policy heading in the right direction. And you and I have been on a number of 8-2 votes that didn't go in our favor. But in the, what sometimes people miss is that it's a long process from that first committee meeting to the final vote. And those dissenting voices, those probing questions, those pain in the rear ability makes sometimes bad policy better policy. So I can't tell you how many times, you know, the first draft coming out, in my opinion, stinks. And even if I end up, by the time it gets all the way through to the board, even if I vote against it, I know that it's better than it started. And that is something I think that you, sir, will continue to do here with all the passion that you regularly show. And it's a passion that this board and this city deserves. Thank you, everybody.
All right, Commissioner Van Stone, did anyone else want to make? Okay, clap. Anyone else want to make any comments?
Are you gonna put your Superman costume on now and fly away?
Apparently I have a part-time job now I gotta take up, thanks, Charles.
He's using it for Halloween.
All right, folks, if no one else wants to make, no comments, I'll entertain them. Jason, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion to adjourn?
I think Jason should make that motion.
Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Madam Vice President, I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes, good luck. Thank you, folks. See you, Jason.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Bye now.
Bye-bye.